Okay, at 6 o'clock, if you have your attention, welcome to the April 9 meeting of the governing body. I'll call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Hofer, who will provide the invocation this evening, okay? We're going to get two people pray for us here. Stand as you are able, then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, tonight I'm going to do something very simple. I'm going to just do a prayer. I'd like to take a moment of silence as we contemplate hiring our new city manager. Give us the wisdom to pick someone who is going to serve the city well and its citizens. So please bow your head and take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call Roblee.
All right, Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Baldivia, Akla.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Kell.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation to share with everyone tonight. If I could have Tanya Griffith and Tiffany Obolzola join me up here. Okay, just one of you.
Yes, she's in the traffic.
Oh, okay. All right, well, welcome this evening.
Thank you.
This proclamation by the mayor was acknowledgment of Law Day. Whereas in 1958, President Eisenhower proclaimed Law Day to honor the role of law in the creation of the United States of America, and in 1961, Congress issued a joint resolution declaring May 1 Law Day. And whereas the theme of Law Day for 2024 is the Voices of Democracy, Engaging, Discussing, Voting, and Building. And whereas at times throughout our nation's history there have been divisions in society aggravated by incivility and public disclosure, discourse, and insufficient understanding about the Constitution and the way American government works. Even the founding generation overcame deep divisions to craft our great Charter of Government. And whereas all Americans must remember, as President Lincoln proclaimed, "We are not enemies, but friends. Though passion may have strained, it may not break our bonds of affection." And whereas members of the legal profession should lead the way in promoting collaboration to overcome our differences and resolve our disputes so that we may strengthen the bonds of affection between citizens and ensure all Americans understand how our constitutional order protects the blessings of liberty. And whereas the theme of Law Day 2024 is the Voices of Democracy, Engaging, Discussing, Voting, and Building, we encourage all Americans to work together to deepen their understanding of the electoral process, engage in honest and civil discussions, turn out to vote, and contribute to the collective effort of moving the country forward after free and fair elections. Now therefore, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do proclaim May 1, 2024, as Law Day and urge Topequans to join in this observance. In witness whereof, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby affix my official signature and official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this day of April 9, 2024. And thank you for being here. Sorry you got caught up in the traffic, but it's good to see you again. Would you like to say something?
Um, go ahead.
Tiffany?
We thank you so much for taking the time to write this proclamation and honor and recognize Law Day. It's such a great theme this year, Voices of Democracy. And so we hope that you all engage in using your voices for good and democracy and continue to support the TBA.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, item number three on the agenda.
We have our presentations as for the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board Annual Update.
Mr. City Manager.
Michael Saunders, of the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board Chair, will make this presentation.
Michaela?
Hi, Michael was my dad. So that's how I became Mikala. Michael was my dad. So thanks for letting me think about my dad right now. Appreciate that. So most of you have met me before. Most of you have heard me give a similar presentation as this before. I'm Mikala Saunders. I'm Chair of the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board. This is my sixth year on the board. And I'd like to just take one second, if you'll permit me. If you are here in the audience because you are interested in this report and you care about Topeka's sustainable future, can you please stand for a minute, please?
Good.
Thank you very much for standing with us. If you are a member of this all-volunteer board, will you keep standing for just a second? Okay, so you know that my time is really brief. We have about five minutes to talk with you today. That's why our report is 21 pages long. Because we care and we serve. Because we love Topeka and we want it to be a place that is vibrant and viable for our great, great, great grandchildren. Right? That's the urgency of this. Okay, I know for a lot of people sustainability can be something that feels really far away and out there and not really ours. It is ours. And we are right against the line where we get to choose if we're going to be proactive or completely reactive for the rest of human existence on this planet, right? And I'm not saying anything that science doesn't agree with. I promise. And in the report, it explains exactly why. So how do I advance this? Just click the mouse. Next, how about that? Okay, so I'm going to talk very briefly. Who we are, our primary goals with this report, and the majority of our recommendations you will see in the written document. But we'll get to that in a second. So this is who we are. We are very, very fortunate to have the incomparable Sylvan Coles as our city staff liaison. He's here in the room and he's amazing. If you haven't had a one-on-one conversation with Sylvan about our city's water and about our city's future in regard to water, you should put it on your list in the short term. We have one vacancy right now. So if anybody watching or comes across this and feels moved, we have one vacancy. Please feel welcome to join us. Most of the folks on this list are in the room. So if you have questions, we are ready. Here we go, next. This is kind of awkward. So our charge in city code is displayed on the board right now. So we advocate for policies supporting sustainability and enhancing the quality of life in Topeka by focusing on areas including, but not limited to, environmental assessment, waste reduction, recycling, energy conservation, and natural resource conservation in the city. We monitor and review. We work to establish priorities and we try our best to serve as an information source for you and for city staff. In some ways, that's been really reciprocal and in other ways, we're kind of invisible. So we look forward to even more collaboration. We specifically want to thank Public Works, Forestry, the Utilities Water Pollution Control Division, and Shawnee County Waste Management for helping us in data collection for the report. Whoops, I need to go backward. Previous. Okay, so we're taking a bit of a different approach this year and we've provided for you a dashboard. These are some things that we think are deserving and requiring critical attention. And we've tried to explain in the report why we gave it the sort of traffic signal color code that we used here. So, and if you haven't seen the report yet, I emailed it all to you at 6 o'clock. So you'll be able to find it. It's at the top of your inbox. So you'll see there are things in here related to, very obviously, everyone would recognize drinking water as a sustainability issue. There are also things like complete streets and affordable housing. And those are sustainability issues because of what they mean for our community. A person who doesn't have a safe place to live or access to good food is not living a sustainable life, both environmentally and related to our strictly quality of life charge, right? That is why we are coming today with the goal of city staff position again. This is just to give you a sense for our peer cities and their level of investment and awareness in sustainability in terms of staffing and in terms of long-range planning and also commitment to climate awareness and climate future, really. So that is in the report as well. And then our number one goal is to prioritize sustainability by creating a staff position that is full-time and fully funded reporting to the city manager's office. This role would include advocacy related to legislation and activities regarding really analyzing everything that we're doing. And are we moving forward or are we moving backward? There is a lot of conversation happening in our region and in cities near us that we're not a part of because we don't have a person to send to that table. And so we're asking you again, for the fifth time in a row, to find a person, find the money, to create a position that gets us at the tables that we need to be at so that Topeka can be a viable community in 20, 30, 50, 80 years from now. Right? So very specifically, these are just some of the things that we think a sustainability coordinator could allow the city to do that we're not doing right now. These are things, we have amazing staff, many of whom are sustainably minded, but they do not have the authority or the positioning to be able to do this kind of work. So do you mind if I just read all of this? Okay, so coordinating and managing sustainability-focused federal and state grant opportunities in coordination with city departments. Measuring the city's progress toward the existing 2020 goals as outlined in the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Plan and reviewing and updating that plan. Coordinating clean energy initiatives, including fleet evolution. Assisting, assessing, proposing city projects for sustainable impact. Providing environmental and technical assistance and training for city staff across all departments. Collaborating with nearby cities and organizations such as Mid-America Regional Council to join and support existing efforts, including the KC Metro Climate Plan and ARQ KC. Participating in regional and national organizations such as Urban Sustainability Directors Network, which is involved with folks in the U.S. and Canada, and the Heartland Sustainability Network, which is a regional statewide state organization. These organizations offer support, collaborate on projects, and share ideas and initiatives as well as connections to national foundations providing funding to support local governments that promote sustainability work. So you are all very aware of a lot of the national priorities related to funding right now. And we've been writing support letters for public works projects, grants. But there are things that we are not eligible for because we do not have sustainability staff. So that when you're thinking about this in lots of different pieces, right? We are losing out on federal funding because we don't have a position like this that can be the owner of the project. So like we've had presentations from folks from Lenexa, for example, who came and was talking about, like, he spends 80% of his job looking for grants and working on grants and he's paid for his position like lots and lots and lots of times over because of what he's able to have, to help that community in terms of grant funding. So, and we also want just to invite you all. Come as often and as frequently as you are able. We meet the first Friday of every month in the Holiday Building in the first floor conference room. The meeting is always over by 5 o'clock. We will never keep you later than 5 o'clock. And I just want to shout out to Kelly because Kelly is a board member and all of the photos that you just saw and all of the photos in the report are from her yard, which is full of native plants. And I'd stand for questions.
Any questions?
Yes. Oh, I don't get to do that. You do that.
Deputy Mayor. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We know, Michael, you're just so passionate. So, you know, I don't feel that I'm doing enough and my commitment has been to you guys for years. But, you know, it's, the work is going and the challenge is going to be to get the support for a full-time position. I do, I would make one suggestion. And I don't know if there's another time during the year instead of once a year for you to make a presentation. But sometimes when we can see, and I'm just saying myself and folks that are watching can see how, what you're stating in recommendations, what that would look like when, if we would do it and if we don't do it, what it looks like. To get that comparison and contrast right out in front of us so we can see. Because it, until it's right at you, it can be very abstract, right? But we know, we know the need for it. And we also know, not just Topeka, so many cities come at this from a reactive when we're already there and, you know, bleeding out. So that would be my suggestion. And I would support, you know, having you come back again in six months with something that can break this down so that the public can see it too and so we can see it as council people. It's real, it's valid. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying so it becomes more tangible in, when you come up here as well.
Yeah. I think I can speak for the board. We would welcome the invitation. We get to come once a year because it says we have to. So you can invite us as much as you like.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your continued commitment.
Yeah, we'll be here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Before you leave, Michael, I'd like to ask you, you have some guests with you in some scouting?
Yes, yes. Would you permit the scouts a couple minutes? They actually prepared a written statement that I was just going to turn in. Would it be okay?
I'd like to hear it, yes, thank you.
Yes? Ellen, what do you think?
Yeah. Say it? Yeah.
Do you want to read it or do you want me to read it? It's your choice.
I'll read it.
You can do it. You can do it. Here we go. You can do it, Ellen.
Dear Mayors, dear Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Ellen Gray. I am 10 and a 4th grade student at Topeka Collegiate. This is my fifth year as a Cub Scout in PAC 3010. And I am speaking on behalf of my Weepalos Den in support of the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board. As a Cub Scout, I've seen the beauty of nature up close during our outdoor adventures. It would be a shame if we didn't take action to preserve it. Sustainability isn't about, just about being eco-friendly. It's also about saving money in the long run. By investing in renewable energy sources and energy-efficient technology, we can lower utility bills and save taxpayer money and create a greener, cleaner city for all of us to enjoy. I believe that as leaders of our city, you have the power to inspire positive change. Let's set an example for other communities by prioritizing sustainability initiatives that will benefit us now and in the future. Together, we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just leave these with you. We're going to be at Party for the Planet on April 20 at the zoo. And we'll be talking about, we'll actually have a demonstration table to help folks understand what's recyclable in Shawnee County and what's not. And we'll also be working with master gardeners and passing out packets so folks can plant milkweed and hopefully bring monarchs to their, to their own yards, too.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you for bringing the others with you as well.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll go on to Agenda Item Number Four.
Four is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Spencer Duncan, granting autumn hydrate, exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions B, our Minnesota regular meeting of April 2, 2024, and there are no applications.
Okay, you've heard the consent on the agenda is read. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilman Duncan, seconded by Councilman Dobler. Everybody's here so we can vote.
Yep, correct.
Use the machines.
Okay, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Motion carried, we move on to item number five on the agenda, action items. Brenda?
A is a public hearing regarding the petition filed by McFarland Farm Master Association Owners Association, Inc. to vacate a portion of the bridleway for southwest Steeplechase Lane and an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstedt relating to the vacation of a portion of the island in southwest Steeplechase Lane just south of southwest 10th Avenue and McFarland Farm subdivision in the City of Topeka Shawnee County, Kansas.
Okay, city manager.
Planning Division Director Dan Warner will conduct this discussion with you.
Good evening, Mayor, governing body. So the applicant is requesting to vacate a portion of the island that's within southwest Steeplechase Lane. That's just south of 10th Avenue and within the McFarland Farm subdivision. The Homeowners Association currently ensures and maintains the landscaping within the island, including a water feature and a bronze monument. The HOA wishes to gain ownership of the island. No public utilities are within the proposed vacated area. No issues were raised by reviewing agencies and notice requirements were met for this public hearing. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Director Warner? Okay, this item requires us to have a public hearing. And so I'll proceed. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Is there anyone present that would like to speak to the matter? And for the third time, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. And now we'll move on to the ordinance. Recognize the governing body for any questions they may have. City managers, you wish to offer any more? We can move to an action for us.
No more comments.
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilwoman Hofer, seconded by Councilwoman Miller. And we'll use the voting when it's ready.
Okay, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Motion carried. We'll move on to action item five, B. Brenda?
B is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers 701045, 281250 Phase 13, and 501105 Phase 13 for reconstruction of the intersection with water line replacement and stormwater conveyance system rehabilitation for 21st Street and Topeka Boulevard.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and governing body, this discussion will be conducted by Braxton Copley, the Public Works Director, as well as Councilmember Ortiz, who is the Public Infrastructure Committee Chair.
Okay. Councilwoman, do you want to go first or you want Director?
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm excited about this project. This is the complete reconstruction of the intersection of 21st and Topeka Boulevard that will allow us to reconstruct in concrete, which is a much better material for a major arterial intersection in terms of being able to stand up to the truck traffic and turn movements. As part of this project, we will be reconstructing the water line that runs right through the intersection and goes up the hill to tie into new PVC line close to Kansas Avenue. Total project budget is $2.5 million, $2 million of which is for the street and $500,000 is for the water. I will apologize in advance to the citizens of the city because to be able to do this project and to be able to do it economically and efficiently, we need to do a full closure of the intersection that will start in August and will go through probably first of, first to middle of December to be able to get this done. So that, we will detour to other major arterials, not through residential neighborhoods. But with the 21st to 29th project going on as well as the reconstruction of this intersection, it is going to be a busy time of year. And yes, orange is my favorite color. Of that, I will gladly stand for any questions or defer to Councilmember Ortiz for any comments.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Braxton said it well. When he came to Quentin Steel Heights, NIA, he said, "Please slow down and be patient. Patient, patient, patient." And I know we've already had some problems on Washburn. And so we have got to slow down everybody, from the fire trucks to our police officers. That's right, we've got, we've got to slow them down because they are going through. Quentin Heights Steel is a square from Topeka Boulevard
21st down to 27th.
To Washburn, back down 21st Street. All of that is getting done, major work done. And Braxton has promised to keep that open so they can get in and out of their homes. But there's a lot of people that are flying through there because we all know how busy Topeka Boulevard is. So we're just going to have to maneuver and we'll get through this. There's going to be a lot of cones and they've been asking when it's going to be done. This is before our committee and we did approve it. I don't know if my colleagues have something to add, but it's going to be exciting. The only thing I can tell you is don't go down Topeka Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to commend the staff for combining these projects. When I first came on, that was one of the ideas I had is, hey, let's look at it. And they were already on top of the ball on it and taking initiative on that. Just as the director said, to get things done right, it will take a full closure. And I know that's going to upset a lot of people, but think of the time it would take if they were trying to do this in little sections through that whole intersection. So please, please be aware that they are trying to do their best. They live here also. They drive through our city. So they're just trying to do their best job that they can with all the projects we have going on. So to get that longevity that we need off these intersections and these streets, we're going to have to suck it up some places to get where we want to be as a city with our PCI and our utilities. So just please, please be patient and allow them to get their work done and drive slowly around the construction sites because these are our neighbors that are out there. Thank you.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Banks. We'll use the voting machines when you're ready.
All right, we have 10. We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Motion's been carried. We'll move to action item five, C. Brenda, please.
C is a resolution introduced by Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers 841091 Phase 1, 841097 Phase 1, 601133 Phase 2, 2811 841091 Phase 1, 841097 Phase 1, 601133 Phase 2, 281162 Phase 2, 281245 Phase 2, and 501105 Phase 11 for High Crest Neighborhood Street Maintenance.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, I'll take this one. I'm very excited, this is a super impactful project. This is going to really make a difference in the High Crest neighborhood. This is a massive project, $6.5 million, and it's going to spread over two years. So the first year, the scope of the project is some curb and gutter work, full depth patching, and then massive amounts of mill and overlay. The area for the first part is the southern two-thirds of High Crest. So start at Golf Park, go down to 37th, go from Adams over to Gerard. So that massive quadrant, which includes Humboldt, Gerard, Fremont, 33rd, 34th, Pinecrest, yada, 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 are all going to have mill and overlay by the end of the season. Then Phase Two in 2025 is going to be the northern portion, so Golf Park up to 31st, Adams over to Irvingham. That is going to include a dreams project, dreams funding to be able to add sidewalk, storm, and curb and gutter along 31st Street. So it's going to be a complete reconstruction of 31st. We're going to be doing some water line work in there as well, and then we'll be doing full-depth patching, some curb and gutter work on the streets within that area bounded by 31st and Golf Park, so Irvingham, Humboldt, Gerard, Fremont, Emerson, Dupont, Colfax, Bryant. So super impactful project. Happy to stand for any questions that you have and would respectfully request your approval of this.
Okay, any questions, Councilwoman?
Mr. Mayor, this also came through our committee. It's going to be nice to have this done. I grew up on Fremont, and I remember that street from way back when. I'm not going to say how far back, but it'll be nice, and I believe staff is coming out to meet with our NIA to explain to them this project at their next NIA meeting so that they will fully understand what this, what's going to happen and how soon it's going to happen and the phases that it's going to happen in. So with that, I don't know if any of my colleagues want to say anything. If not, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilwoman Kell. When you're ready? Okay.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried, we'll move to Action Item Five D. Brenda, if you'll read.
D is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstead regarding additional funding for operations and maintenance of Hotel Topeka.
Mr. City Manager?
So if I, if I may, Mayor, governing body, let me make a few remarks before Braxton does. The hotel's ours, okay? It's not the way we necessarily like it. We're trying to get it out of our own hands, but as long as it's ours, it's an asset. And in order to make sure that we have an asset to get into somebody else's hands, some different owner's hands, we have to do these things. And I want you to think about last night. If that hotel would have closed, it is likely that we would not have been able to utilize those rooms last night that you did for the city manager candidates that came to town. The next, the next group coming in, I was told at breakfast this morning by Michael, is the Knights of Columbus are coming in to the hotel. So, and what, what he told me and a couple of staff told me was that things are getting better and that there are more groups slowly taking an interest in using the facility. And they try to perform the best service they can. So I guess what I really want to say is thank you. It was one of the burning issues when I came here. It's still a burning issue, probably be a burning issue when I leave, but you did the right thing to keep this hotel open for the city of Topeka. Braxton?
Director?
I'm here tonight to ask for additional operating funds to help us keep this hotel going. It is, it's suffering, it's, it's not a high-performing hotel. We are obligated under our management agreement to make up any operating fund deficiencies within 10 days from a request that comes in. We have, to date, you've authorized $1 million. We have spent or have committed all but $30,000 of that. At the end of April, I fully expect to get another funding request to come in for operational deficiency, hence my reason for being here in front of you tonight to ask for this additional tranche of operational funding so that we're ready and have that money on hand when the next request comes in. We provided you a breakdown of every penny that we spent on the $100,000 in terms of where it's, where it's been. I'm sorry, the million dollars that we've, that we've spent so far. With that, I'll gladly stand for any questions and respectfully ask for passage of the resolution to provide this additional funding.
Okay, we have any questions from the governing body? For Braxton? Entertainer motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, seconded by Councilman Miller. Thank you. Do we do it again?
We have seven yes, with councilmembers Valdivia, Akala, Ortiz, and Banks voting no, the motion carries.
Okay, that's the last of our action items, we'll move now to Agenda Item Six, non-action items. Madam Clerk?
A is discussion item regarding an additional budget allocation to the Topeka Cemetery Association to provide for supplemental funding, the amount of $50,000 for the purchase of a backhoe loader.
Mr. City Manager?
I do, Mayor and governing body, thank you. I, I support and encourage you to vote for Councilwoman Ortiz's motion on this, and I'll tell you what, there are two ways on how you know that a, a lot about a community when you go in a community. When we had young children, we used to pull this tent camper around. Thank goodness they aren't young anymore, and I don't have that tent camper. But one of the places we would go would be parks, and you can tell a lot about a community when you pull into their park and see the pride they take. And the same is for cemeteries also. If you go to a, when you go to a cemetery, not that I like going to cemeteries a lot, but when you do go to a cemetery, notice the maintenance. Notice how well it's taken care of. That is reflective of how the community feels about its pioneers and about how it feels about its residents. So with that, that's all the comments I have.
I don't believe that we're up for vote tonight, it's just discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I had never, until my husband took me out there probably about, I don't know, 15 years ago, I never knew how actually beautiful the cemetery is and was. And I think funding has often been a challenge for it, and we know that it's also part of an LMI community. So I think, you know, as, as we talk about trying to lift up, you know, our communities, all districts, I think that this will, is definitely something that is well worth the money. So when it comes up for a vote, I will be supporting. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trying to get over him driving a camper in the cemetery, but that's okay. It's all right, Richard, it's really all right. So my mother passed away when I was 18 months old, so I've always been to the cemetery, not in a camper, but I've always went. And, and Topeka Cemetery is where my family's at, and I always tell people, you know, I've lived in District Three in East Topeka all my life, and now I'm buying plots there, so I'm going to die there and be buried there, you know? But it is really, really cool, and some of the things that Ms. Lisa's here, if you guys have any questions, it is really cool, and all the cool things that they do. They honor the vets, that was really, really cool, how they do that. And people show up and put roses on a, on a, in a big old tombstone thing. And the NIA's have continuously put the black fence around it to try to make it look just as, as important or better than, than the, the other cemetery at 17th and Fairlawn, I'm trying to think of the name, but anyway. So we, we have a backhoe that they need. And so Lisa contacted me, and I sat down with staff, and so we decided that really the contract was so old because we don't want to, we don't want to own a cemetery, trust and believe, we don't. And so we looked at the contract, and they received, they haven't received money in seven years, and we gave them $50,000 more, just, just, just because. And then in the contract, what Amanda decided to do was put in there, we're going to give them an extra $50,000 for that backhoe, which is, which is much needed. I think Karen, I think Karen was helping me with that and with prices. When Councilman Emerson was here, I called him to see if he wanted to have a backhoe to sell, well, he didn't have any, but you know how that goes. And so, you know, we looked at used ones, we've looked at, we've looked all, we've looked at all resources. So I would really encourage my colleagues to really support this when, when it comes up for vote next week. Like I said, Ms. Lisa's here, if you have any questions for her. I also know that Jim Parish and Nancy, they have their plots out there. There's, there's a lot of interesting people out here. And we also have, we also have one of our vice presidents.
Curtis.
Curtis, yeah. And so, yeah, they do ghost tours, if you're into ghosts, I'm not, so I stay away from that. But it's amazing how many people come out and work on the old, the old tombstones and sandblast them and everything. And Lisa, if you'll help me, I know that there's a cleanup day in May.
Generally, the Saturday before Memorial Day.
Come, come on up here. This is the lady who does it all, and she's about to retire, I'm going to miss her.
We just got another Lisa, so.
Okay.
Yeah, her name's Lisa Ford.
Can you, can you talk about the cleanup day for volunteers?
Right now, it isn't scheduled yet. We, we got hung up between rain and COVID. It's been a few years since we've had it, but the last cleanup day we had, 70 people turned out on a Saturday morning, and it was overcast and boo, but they, they had great faith, and they came out with mowers and weed eaters and rakes and gloves, and we did everything from painting the trash cans to, we got some, the lattice work around the house, we got that, that finished off. And, and then, like I said, the folks who bring their mowers, I've always got a place for them to mow.
So, and somebody just redone the, what is it, the well, not the well, but the pond area?
Oh, yes, last year, we had a company come out and, and for free, they completely rehabbed our fountain. They, they sandblasted it down to the concrete, did, did a perfect pool finish on it, and they also redid the deck. If we'd paid for it, it would have run about $14,000, and we got it gratis. We have lots of friends like that, and, and I would like to take just a minute to say that obviously we have a very close relationship with the city, and, and every encounter I've had, regardless of the department, because we deal with water pollution control, we've got ditches on both sides, and, and we have two water meters, the city staff has, has been terrific at every, at every turn. So, and I did want to point out, I dropped you each a guidebook. We have been publishing those for about the last seven years, and we actually have enough contact with the public that we give out about 1,000 a year. And that includes the 300 people who were there over two nights in October for the Friends of Historic Topeka Cemetery's ghost tours. And just so you know, we aren't hunting for ghosts, we're merely telling stories that, that are appropriate to October, that are absolutely true. It's always the second weekend in October, and we hope you all could join us. Because I'll still be with the friends.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Kell?
Well, just reading through your booklet there, one thing I noticed was all grounds and buildings of historic Topeka Cemetery are National Historic Registry of Historic Places. And then I liked the opening line, "Think of the Topeka Cemetery as an outdoor museum of Topeka and Kansas history." You know, that's, that's why I, I look at cemeteries differently now, and my father passed away a couple of years ago, and it's always going in and just, you know, grandparents, this, that. But it's like now, it's like I go in with a new perspective of, my dad's buried around his friends, so then it's like, okay, upkeep of this, of this grave, that grave, and, and lots of times, a lot of cemeteries don't have that opportunity to have the upkeep they need. So I think anything the city can do to help would be, would be great, and then, as you said, your, your volunteerism with the people coming out to help you is great. So if anyone has anything they can offer, you know, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Ortiz when she finds out about that mowing and stuff like that, to let me know so I can come out and help, because I used to run a landscaping business, so.
We do also help the city out over across the street at Mount Auburn, which is a cemetery that you all own. Since we've been doing the burials there for the city, we have also taken responsibility for doing the locations. If a family's looking for a family member, they, they can come to our office, and, and we will flag the grave or take them out there if they need to go. We have many, many customers in common between the two cemeteries. I even have relatives in Mount Auburn, so.
And the ghost tours are great also. I've done those in several different places, and it's a great way to learn the history of that area through, through the people that are laid to rest in those cemeteries.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Since you're here and we have a moment, I want to take a minute to thank Lisa for her service. She really has done a wonderful job running this cemetery all these years, both in terms of the, the technical, just what it takes to, to mow and keep things clean and keep things in order. Gone through a couple of rounds of software and people's ideas to do grave locations and so on, and help families find their stories as well as their family members and people with historic stories of some sort, as well as, and you got a picture of that, running a really lean operation that gets the job done. And so, thank you, Lisa, for all your service. And you've got some board members here too, I think.
We do. Christian Kramer, the president of the Cemetery Board of Directors, our incoming superintendent, Lisa Ford, and Carol Glossbach, who also serves on our board.
Thank you all.
Councilman Dobler?
Seems like there's a lot of support for this. Is there any reason we can't suspend the rules and make this an action item tonight?
And make a motion?
I would let Councilwoman Ortiz, if she feels the desire to do that?
Absolutely. Where's my attorney at? She, there she is. Okay, I'd like to suspend the rules and put it on as an action item.
Okay, I think vote, first we have to vote on suspending the rules, and then we'll vote on the motion. So right now, we'll vote on suspending the rules. I'm looking at the. Yep.
We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay, rules being suspended, open for motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the extra $50,000 for the purchase of a backhoe loader.
Seconded by Councilman Dobler, and we're ready to vote?
Hold on, I have to add it here.
When you're ready. Good move.
Okay, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay, good, motion carried. We were talking about ghost stories. Maybe, I don't know if Chief Willis back there remembers any of this, but I know, back when I was a police officer, I worked on the east side for a long time in third shift. And I have one particular partner who just did not like going to the cemetery. And we did that because on occasion, there would be vandals out there that wanted to deface some of the tombstones and so forth. So we'd pull in there, 2:00 in the morning or so, lights out, just creep along, windows down, listening to see if we could hear anybody creeping around. And it drove him nuts, because I constantly would say, "Did you see somebody peeking?" I think I just saw somebody run back that way. And then there was a place back there where they used to keep some of the vaults there where we're preparing for services. And I'd go, we'd drive back in there as well. And on occasion, I'd tell him, "I hear something back there. Sounds like concrete." And we'd go back there, and I said, "Look." And the lids on the vaults had been moved. I said, "Somebody's moving those vaults out here." He refused to go into the cemetery with me, but he really did not like driving in front of the mausoleums. That's a, it's a good place to visit.
Thanks, Alex.
Okay. We'll move on now to non-action item 6B. Madam Chair.
B is discussion of the proposed 2025 to 2034 CIP and the 2025 to 2027 CIB.
Mr. City Manager.
Our budget manager, Josh McEnany, will lead you through this discussion.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, governing body. Tonight, we're in our fifth week discussing the CIP. And kind of the plan for tonight is to discuss any questions or comments the governing body has, and then with a tentative plan to take action next week. So we'll just kind of open the floor to the governing body.
Okay. Josh is available. Councilwoman Dobler.
Yeah, I think I just have a comment. This, this CIP's been, in my opinion, was put together very well. Process has been handled well. We, seems like we've spent adequate time without spending a ton of time on it. I see no reason why this can't be approved next week. Thank you, Mayor.
Further comment from the body? Councilwoman Hiller, and then Councilwoman Ortiz, and then Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to thank staff for the work so far. I did get back through it and sent a number of questions into Josh and staff, and got a really thorough response from, from Josh on, on all those various things that I very much appreciate. I'm concerned that even in this, at this time, when it seems like there may be a little extra money here and a little extra money there, that we've all had such a focus on, watching not only what we have in the CIP and getting things done, but doing it in the most cost-effective way possible, so that our dollars are stretched. And that's still important to me. I think, though, with the great answers that I got from Josh through my list, the, the one thing that still lingers is, is the firm program. The staff is planning to put that back in for, for bonding instead of for cash, which it was supposed to be for the next three years. One lingering thing they've not been able to answer for me yet is, is looking at, I mean, I'm looking for money in that operating budget. If the staff feels like it's not there, I would sure like to have firms stay. That is maintenance money. That is not capital improvement money. And I think it's short-sighted for us to, once we got it started in the operating budget, to take it back out, if we can possibly help it. And so I would like to leave it in there. What I'd asked Josh to do, which was just an idea on my part, was to look back through, because we all know that as many as 30 new positions that had not been budgeted prior to the 2023 budget got added. I don't know where they are. I know that a lot of them are not filled. I'm assuming that they're still, they still exist in what's working on the 2025 budget right now. And if it was possible to, you know, these are related, the capital budget and the operating budget, it was possible to kind of wash through that operating budget and see that, that we could, in fact, with what we know right now, leave that firm money in there. I would like to see that before next week, if possible.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
I, I just want to thank you, Josh, for explaining it and for all your hard work on this. I think it was very, you did a good job.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I should've asked this question before, but I'm asking it now. When we vote on the CIP, is there any way to take out an item to vote on it separately? And I'm asking, yes, so just yes, then we're good. That's all we needed. Thank you.
Anything further? Councilwoman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't ask you to vote on it tonight. I will next week. You can either turn me down, or let's hope not. My, and I meant to bring copies for everybody and forgot them. I did send them to the city clerk, but I'll email it around. What will surprise nobody, as I have said multiple times, is I think we have, time has come to add T-PAC into our CIP. Obviously, as we've said 100 times, we own the building. It is the only piece of property we own that is not in the CIP. We've included the hotel, which we just purchased. We've got parking garages, police, fire. We still have the zoo in the CIP, which we don't even manage anymore. So for years, I've set up here and asked and been told repeatedly, "Don't worry, there's money in the maintenance budget. We promise we'll use some of those funds for T-PAC." And year after year, that is not what happened. And that was fool me once, twice, and three times. So here I am for a fourth time saying, "It's time to designate dollars specifically to T-PAC," so that that can't happen. The other issue is, it will solve the long-term problems over there, if we can put it into the CIP. And I'll, I'll read what my amendment will be here in just a second. So that we don't have to talk about this, and you don't have to hear me bring it up every year. And so, and we can give them some long-term stability for that facility, which not only will help them with capital improvements that they need to, to keep moving forward, but some of those improvements and investments, I'm here to tell you, and, and T-PAC will be here first, I think, early May to give a presentation. But one of the things they hear, and you hear this with a lot of things from the community, is, "Stop asking me to invest in that in which you will not invest in yourself." Right? They want to show if the city's committed to it, stepping up a little bit before they put dollars into that facility. And there are some of those commitments who are just waiting for us to show that we're ready to commit. So my amendment that I will ask for a vote on before we approve the CIP does the following. One, it would amend the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2025 to 2029 to allocate $325,000 annually to the Topeka Performing Arts Center for the purpose of capital improvement expenditures. Two, the Board of Trustees of T-PAC, in conjunction with relevant city staff, shall develop plans outlining the specific capital improvement projects to be undertaken each fiscal year, along with costs and timelines. And three, the Board of Trustees of T-PAC will present the improvements to the City Council Infrastructure Committee for approval prior to any expenditures. So my goal isn't just to try to put the money there, it's to not just hand them the money and say, "We hope you do it," which you're supposed to. It's to keep, use the same process we use now to make sure that city staff is involved, city council is involved, and those projects are approved by us. So, so that will be my ask next week. I will make it an official amendment next week, and I'll send it around to everybody. Gives everyone a week to ask questions, and I have talked to staff about it, so just wanted to throw it out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Hiller.
Quick question across the table. Is there some backup available? That's $1.2 million. When we talked about that.
It's actually 1.6, just to clarify. Over five years.
When it came up before, they, we haven't seen a, a list. We're doing a number of the things right now that were major items that were needed before. Is there a backup list now for 1.5 or 6, whatever that is?
There's a longer list. The first list I provided was just for that one sum of money that we talked, that $500,000 or initially that I was gonna request from the money we've now set aside. So, so that's why I gave that just specific list. But yes, they have, I mean, and I will talk to their, them by getting that to you. Yes, they have a very lengthy list of.
Because that was really only to develop Black Box, which hadn't even been on the list before, so.
It was, but yes, we'll get you a list.
Thank you.
Further questions? Comments? Councilman Miller?
I just want to second what Councilman Duncan is talking about. If we're thinking long-range about bringing acts and different things to what T-PAC has a very specific ability to be able to help the city bring in funds with transit money, I think that they can get a lot of good acts with the facility that they have if we allow some money for them to get some improvements. So I will definitely be voting for this.
Thank you, sir. Further? Thank you for your comments. I'll be looking for the amendment. I, too, believe that it's an asset that has been overlooked and taken for granted. I think that we have opportunities that will come to us in that venue, should we do the things that need to be done to attract the variety of performances and entertainment that appeals to the entire community. So I appreciate that effort on your part, Councilman. Nothing further for discussion? We'll move to public comment. Thank you, Josh. Public comment, we have four persons signed. Loretta Anno.
My name is Loretta Anno. I am a tenant and a previous property manager for Topeka Timbers, Caravan Mobile Home Park, Regis Mobile Home Park, whatever it's called now. I am here pleading with everybody for help. The new owner of our trailer park is evicting people for non-payment of rent when they have paid. He was expecting double rent for people in December, both to the previous owner and to himself. And when he did not get this extra payment, he evicted people. One lady ended up sleeping in her vehicle because she was disabled, no place to go. All of them had receipts that they paid, but they still got evicted. Even though they owned their own homes, they were locked out of their homes. I, myself, have fallen under that. I had to deal with the new owner of the park to rehab four homes. And when I found out that he was trying to do some shady business with me, I backed out of it. And the following couple of weeks, he gave me a pre-eviction notice, says that he's not gonna renew my lease. Nobody in our trailer park has a lease. None of us. He, he is well aware of our tree problem, our road problem, our water and sewer line problem. He promises, he says that he's going to do things, but nothing has been accomplished. He is now threatening to put meters on everybody's water lines. Most of us don't have a problem with that, but he's also talking about raising our rent. Our rent has been a set rate with water, sewer, trash, all included, for many, many, many years. Now he's wanting to raise rent. As a property, as a previous property manager, he's talking about $500 a month per lot, plus your water, sewer, trash, and all your other utilities. Our trailer park's full of disabled people. We can't walk in our trailer park because of the road conditions. I have fallen numerous times. Nothing's been done. I made complaints to the city. They finally came out and put a stop-work order on him because he was, one of his associates or whatever, that is also a tenant in the trailer park, brought a big, heavy bulldozer-type thing to demolish these trailers, ended up rupturing our water lines, leaving many people without water overnight with, I mean, there's no property manager, so we have no communication with anybody. He does not call people to tell them. He emails. Some of our tenants don't have email. We need help. This trailer park needs help. Our disabled people need help, and we are here to ask everybody for that help, to get the trailer park where it needs to be, where it should be, and to keep those of us in our homes and safe without being evicted for no rightful reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, lastly.
I know. I thought somebody would get ahold of me, me and last week, see what went on with this. Is there an ordinance? I mean, I'm asking, is there ever gonna be an ordinance about them trees that's unsafe, overgrown in between trailers, causing damage? Especially the mine. I've been in two different spots both times. They get them downdrafts, you know, them tall trees, they can't handle it. They come down on trailers, well, they got no place else to go. They're unsafe, and we need some kind of ordinance to protect us from overgrown trees. Previous owners have offered me to do the trees for rent, whatever else they wanted to give me. I go down south end of the Topeka Bridge there to get the license, you know, so I can get insurance. Guy says, "I can't give you a license. You wanna top trees." See what that's gonna do to the environment, and all this crap, you know? That's almost six acres, seven acres. Not gonna affect the environment that much. I just, I don't believe, and if you top them, there's a couple of trees that have been topped 12 years ago. They got another 10 years. Okay? Easy. So that's just what they, what the trailer park would look like if you topped them the same way they did them, same height. A safe height is probably, you know, a foot higher than the trailers. And it don't take long for them suckers to come out. If you trim them right, you got a beautiful tree again. It don't look the same as a regular tree because they're 60 years old, you know? They should never have planted those kind of trees in there. And you won't find a trailer park today planting them kind of trees in there. You know, even these little housing developments, you won't see them kind of trees in there either, not anywhere close to the houses. So I'm just, I'm just asking for an ordinance. I'm begging for an ordinance, please.
Thank you, sir. Kate Hamilton.
My name's Kate Hamilton. I'm a resident of District Eight, and I'm here tonight as a secretary of the Sierra Club. The board would like me to speak on behalf of the report you received this evening from the Sustainability Advisory Board. We met with the Women League of Voters last month and reviewed this report and found it very important. We know how much time and thought you all put into your community's service and how well you serve the common good. We really hope that you will give full attention to this report, because we feel like Topeka and northeast Kansas, and perhaps the region, are at a real turning point. It's an unusual time, both in terms of threat and opportunity. And we know that you all will be conscious of that as you review the report. We fully support their number-one recommendation, which is a full-time sustainability coordinator to have those responsibilities they outline in the report. You may be aware that Hutchinson has three full-time staff working on sustainability. At the most recent Mid-America Regional Council meeting, the city planners were urged to move beyond sustainability into mitigation, adaptation. Climate change isn't something that's coming. It's here now. I think most of us see it already in the quality of life we experience in our area. My daughter lives up in Hoyt, so I drive up Highway 75 frequently. And my concern grows as I watch the Cal River decline. I know what it means, both in terms of quality and quantity of our water supply. I'm also concerned about that field that's been let go to Red Cedars that's adjacent to residential, right on the city line. I know you all have seen a cedar burn. You know what kind of fire hazard it was. And just this past Friday, just north of Manhattan, roads were closed, thousands of acres burned, a home was destroyed, and the governor declared an emergency. The threats we experience are balanced by the opportunities. I know you all are aware, here recently, the federal government has passed both The threats we experience are balanced by the opportunities. I know you all are aware, here recently, the federal government has passed both the Federal Inflation Reduction Act and a bipartisan infrastructure law that offer billions of dollars to communities that are well-prepared and positioned to accept dollars to deal with some of these kinds of issues. You may be aware that Salinas is converting school buses to electric buses, and they're receiving over $300,000 per bus. Manhattan has a forestry major for a city manager for the last 24 years. He's won awards and he's won grants that affect the quality of life in Manhattan. As you look at a city manager candidate, I hope you'll be asking him questions about his experience, his knowledge, and his commitment to our climate and our environment and our future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Henry McClure.
Reset it. There you go. Hi, Your Honor. I liked your story. Makes you more likable. Good sense of humor.
Thank you for sharing. Makes me want to go visit Clark Duffy out in his cemetery. At least he, he really liked some of the ideas. I think the longer y'all are around, you're going to want to own less buildings. Whoa, there you go. I'm going camping with him now. All right. I can't get that out of my mind either. With the CIP coming up, we've been working hand in glove with Braxton to try to get, earn your business out at White Lakes for the garage, and what I'd really like to see is to make that garage deal one time. The instructions I have from Mainline Printing is to make sure that we get the city of Topeka to, to look at that for a long-term solution. And the nice thing about the Mainline Printing deal is we've got the capital to build whatever you need. The, a lease would need to make sense, and I just think in time, you're going to want to explore leasing versus zoning, and, and, and that's, that's a whole different debate. And I'm not trying to rub the hotel, not, not on this one, but there's 100 ways to skin a cat. When I was with the Mace Rich Company, we acquired our best shopping mall by sell, by buying the covenant to operate it. And by purchasing the covenant to operating it, we were able to gain enough capital to then, in time, own fee simple. But with the CIP out there right now and other projects, like, I love that idea of getting that off-ramp from the turnpike. Now, that's economic development. That would be cool. That's going to help the community. But if we can start taking some of the burden off of the taxpayer by these capital purchases, and what would really be nice, too, is to have you guys feel the pain of paying taxes. So through the triple net lease, and the nice thing about this, on the lease, between your team, I've got some of the best leases in the shopping center industry because the Coldwell Banker guys are representing the Parkers, and I can share with you all the inside information that the Mace Rich Company had in all the collection of leases. You've got, you've got a great legal staff. His, Parker's lawyer is Vern Jarboe, and Kelly Tressel came from his law firm. So when you're thinking about this from 10,000 feet, you have, we got to start letting the market decide more what happens. I disagree with ever, even ever purchasing the hotel. But, and what I'm telling you is, the market now is telling you, you can lease a building from somebody who's got the capital to build whatever you want. And if there's any place that needs some love and attention, that's White Lakes. It got ignored for years. It made it just impossible for me to lease the Bennigans and, you know, I'm really thankful for Mainline Printing, for buying the Gordmans and Five Acres that helped us get the Chick-fil-A deal and Whataburger. So think of that when you're thinking about the CIP. And I live for the day you suspend the rules for Henry McClure, so I'm going to dream on that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's the final person signed up for public comment. We'll move on to announcements. Madam clerk.
Okay, for the April 16th agenda, we will have two proclamations, one presentation, the consent agenda. We will have a resolution for noise exception and a special event for the Germanfest 2024. We will have a professional services contract with Baker Tilly. We will also have a resolution for eminent domain for street intersection reconstruction project. The action items included the Topeka Cemetery, but that was approved this evening, and then we will consider the CIP and CIV for approval, and then the corresponding resolution and notice of intent for revenue bonds of the utility system. And there are no discussions.
Thank you. City Manager.
Mayor of governing body, a city of Topeka has been awarded grants totaling $30,000 from the National League of Cities for two city-inclusive entrepreneurship initiatives. The Anchor Procurement Initiative, $15,000, and Latino Entrepreneurship Training Initiative for $15,000. More information will be forthcoming.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hofer.
Okay. Are you ready? Okay, I had one thing tonight, and it has to do with the road closure. Coming up, starting on the 15th, First Street is going to close. It will be a block, but it's an industrial area with a lot of big trucks, semis, you name it. We have it coming down there. So I got a copy of the map. They are going to have street closed from Kansas Avenue to Topeka Boulevard. Those people that work in that area and need to get to those businesses will be able to get to them, but I want everybody to think about alternate routes. This is only going to last for three weeks. There is another closure on Second Street, which is below the viaduct. It will be closed for two months. Very few people are using that right now. It's more for the construction traffic, that they're starting the utility project there between First and Second Street. So if you can, I would suggest you avoid the area unless you have business there. I just want to make people aware that this is happening and happening next week. And be, I think 15th is Monday, so this is your prior notice. If I wait till next week, it'd be, you'd be running into the street closures. And it's not the only one in town, so it's a case of, we always have people that try to go around and ignore the signs, go right into the area that they're working on. And I don't want to see any of our workers get hurt because somebody decides they'll take a shortcut. So please be aware of it, and there's going to be more downtown. River Road is already closed, and it's closed for six months or seven months, except during Fiesta time. So I hate to say it, but it's land of the perpetual detours is starting up again for the season.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I've just, two things. One, we just had a couple of, of big projects that we went through. I think those discussions are great, and I just wanted to point out that I think returning the approval when projects are ready of those major projects was a really good move for us, and I hope others appreciate it. I think we learned a little better by going through them one at a time, and it really refreshes both us and our citizens when something's about to come forward. So just kudos to all involved. I'll give Councilman Dobler, I think, the lead credit for it, but got everybody to vote for it, right? And second, this will probably come up again, but just wanted to express appreciation for the staff, our city manager candidates, and the public for the input and the concern and the process that we've had so far about our city manager hiring process. Yesterday was a pretty big day for us, and, and it went well. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to do a little update on one of the individuals that came up with public comment tonight and the mobile home park issue in, in North Topeka. For probably, ooh, on and off during my first four years, I had been out there any number of times. We had, I really pushed HCCI to go out there and meet with the folks that had any number of what I believed were valid complaints, had numerous texts, phone calls, emails with a whole lot of individuals out there that definitely had some very trying and difficult stories in a, a mobile home park that leaves a lot to be desired. The one thing that happened, though, ultimately at that time, is that everything fell through. Nothing went forth for any retaliatory cases. One of the individuals went to court on his own, but the encouragement to get folks to go through the process ended up falling through the cracks in every single way. I understand that some of this, I will never understand not being in such a place of desperation and poverty, but I have to push back a little bit in that it takes two sides to bring these issues up. We don't have the staff that is going to be able to go out to the mobile home park and do all of the signing up and all of the case, everything that is needed to get these folks justice. It is a two-way street, and I know that that can be frustrating. When it comes to the tree, there, that happened the first part of December when it was brought to our attention, the city went above and beyond, and they cut trees that they were not required to cut. They went and trimmed those trees. They also went and wrote over 40 code enforcement. City Attorney?
Okay. All right.
Okay. You know, code enforcement cases. So there is a lot that is happening out there. There was, we even went so far as to, you know, to help get a case forward, and that fell through as well. So we have a tree ordinance that it has to be, has to go through public health and safety first. That took some time to get through. Unfortunately, it doesn't happen sometimes in six to eight weeks. We have a strengthened retaliatory eviction ordinance as well, but if folks want help, they're going to have to help me and help the city in getting everything together to go through the process. It, it cannot be the city doing everything. This is a two-way street. And so my phone number, and Mr. Lasley has it, it's 785-233-7110. You can contact me directly, and again, it has to be us working together. But I will, I just want to say, this has been an issue for a long period of time, and there has been many attempts to go out there and help. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
City Manager, I got a text. They just want to know, was that a pop-up camper? What kind of camper was that?
Starcraft.
Starcraft? Okay, you heard it. Starcraft. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor? Councilman Bank.
Nothing, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman McHale.
I just wanted to comment that, and say thank you to our candidates, candidates we had for city manager, and along with our staff, Liz and Jane, with the mayor's office and the city council office, HR, our communications office, police, city clerk, our, our, oh, what you call it, the search agency, SGR, but also our citizens. I've gotten several emails and text messages about people that showed up last night. It was amazing to see how many people showed up last night and sat around and listened to the candidates, asked several questions of the candidates, and then to get some of the responses from, from the citizens directly on how they felt about each candidate and listen to pros and cons was very helpful, that we can all share that information now with each other and go from there to help pick the best person to lead our city here in the future. And I know we've said this several times, but thank you to Richard for being around as long as he has to help us. It was, what, a three-month deal to start off with, and we're six weeks, and then, yeah, and we're, we're, we're six months now or so, but he's been a great asset to the city, and our staff did a great job, job yesterday, and I believe our citizens did a great job yesterday. Thank you.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I second the conversation about the city manager process. I appreciate, I really loved to see all the citizens that came out. That was really awesome to see the support and engagement from everyone. I will move on to the next item that I wanted to make sure that I brought up today. I believe, especially when it comes to kids, about exposure to different activities. You don't know what a kid can get into and what they like unless they're exposed to it. And I recently spoke with Stephanie Moran, who is the Senior Vice President at Go Topeka of Innovation. She is a Topeka Rowing Association member and a strong advocate for that. And I've never been a part of rowing. I'm deathly afraid of a big body of water because I can't swim, and, and I can admit that, and I'm a grown man, and I'll stand up with my chest on that, but I'm going to get into that water and get into that boat and do some rowing just so that I can figure out what it feels like, how the different muscles it works. And I think that the Topeka Rowing Association's been around for a long time, started at Washburn University. I think if kids can get exposed to that, it would be wonderful for them to understand because there's scholarships, and there's ability for you to play college sports at different universities if you're just an athlete. They'll teach you how to do rowing, but if you're an athlete, they'll give you an opportunity to be able to do something, and you can go to a school and get some college paid for. So there is a Learn to Row event that's going to be for June 1st, and I, I think everybody should go to rowtopeka.com and check that out, because I think that'd be awesome for people to be able to learn how to do. Thank you very much.
Councilman Dobler.
Thanks, Mayor. Might point out that most gyms have a rowing machine. No, no water.
I might start there.
No water involved. So I think Councilman Kell really covered the, the thank yous to, to staff and, and community. I want to thank the five individuals that came here and interviewed. A lot of people don't realize, you, you basically have to tell your current employer, I mean, they know because it's, it's public that you're looking at another job, which sometimes makes it difficult. They all made the trip. They learned about Topeka. I thought they all did, did a great job. So I appreciate them taking the time to come and invest a little bit of their life in, in Topeka. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing, seeing, I want to thank Councilmember Hofer for putting something on the screen. Now that I know we can do that during announcements, this changes everything. So there we go. Monday, April 15th is tax day, and to help you wash that away, the city of Topeka will begin common consumption on the same day, April 15th. It is here, it begins, both in Noto and downtown Topeka. The rules are in place. You can go to topeka.org on the website and sort of see what those rules are, but the businesses are gearing up. So after you've taken care of that tax issue on Monday, come on down. come on downtown or go down to NODO and get your drink and walk up and down the street, and there will be signage up. And I'm sure there will be a few hiccups as we all figure it out, both as a community and the police department and probably the state of Kansas. But that's not only a positive development for Topeka and what it'll help us do long-term, but history will always show that it was Topeka that took that to the legislature, got it in place, got it done. And now there are several communities that have opened it up across the state of Kansas. So trying to lead the way across the state on some of that stuff for economic development. And so Tax Day it is, and April 15th it begins. Thank you, Mayor.
It's all in the timing, isn't it? I just want to wrap up with regards to our discussions yesterday in our search for a city manager. Compliment and thank my colleagues for a very long day in the room going through questions and questions and questions and being really attentive to those answers and attentive in consideration to their fellow council members to make sure that everybody's thoughts, opinions, and ideas were brought forth. So this really is going to be a joint decision. So when it is made, I want to prepare the public for that, that it is going to be a decision made by this entire governing body. No one individual or two individuals are going to make those choices because we're working together to get this done in the best way possible. And I just want to say one last thing, kind of recognize, you know, the scouts that were here tonight. But it made me think about this last week and March Madness and everything that went on and the craziness around women's basketball. I mean, that's just amazing. But just to thank every coach and every student who participates in sports, I think it makes their lives richer. I think it makes their experience in grade school and high school richer and college as well. And I think they learn a lot of life skills by competing in sports. And thank you to all the coaches that put in hours and hours and hours of time to mentor those students. So those are my final comments. We have a need. Did you say it? Okay.
Want to add on to that. There was a time when people were upset about the NIL deals that college kids are getting. But what that's doing is that's making them stay in college longer. They still have to go to class. They still have to commit to that portion of it. If they're good enough, yeah, they get some NIL money and they get something. But we're keeping kids in school longer, showing that loyalty and commitment to something makes you greater. The teams that are doing the best, now South Carolina was kind of an anomaly on that. They lost the majority of their roster and were still able to win the championship. But Iowa and other schools, even like UConn, have all those kids that have been in the school for a really long time. Take your time, stay in school for a while, and good things can happen. So I like how it's ended up making, NIL has made it that where having some history at your school and being there for a while is being possible. Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to check with our city attorney because I believe that there is a need for at least one executive session this evening. City Attorney?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. There's just need for one executive session tonight. And the motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed one hour to discuss the five candidates for city manager as allowed under KSA 754319B1. The following individuals will be presented to the governing body in their discussion, members of the governing body, city attorney Stanley, and anyone else the governing body finds useful. The open meeting will resume at the completion of the executive session in the city council chambers.
Thank you. You've heard the need for an executive session. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Dobler, seconded by Councilman Kell. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? One opposed? We will adjourn into executive session and take a 10-minute break before we start discussion. Okay, we've concluded our first executive session. There is a need for a second one. But at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion so that we can go into a second executive session and go beyond our 10 o'clock normal deadline for council meetings. So I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to extend.
To extend beyond 10 o'clock?
Absolutely.
By Councilman Miller and seconded by Councilman Kell. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? No, one opposed. Okay. City Attorney, if you will read for our second executive session. We can't hear you. Your sound went off. Still can't hear you. Oh, wait a minute. It's Taylor. Try now. There you go.
The motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed one hour to discuss the five candidates for city manager as allowed under KSA 754319B1. The following individuals will be presented to the governing body in discussion, the governing body, city attorney Stanley, anyone else the governing body finds useful. The open meeting will resume at the completion in the city council chambers.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the need for a second motion. Moved by Councilman Dover, seconded by Councilwoman Hofer. Those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are now adjourned into our second executive session. Thank you. Okay, we have concluded our second executive session. No decisions have been made. No further business coming before this body. The meeting is adjourned.